Well, there is more high drama in the village of Dalton tonight where embattled Mayor Tiffany Henyard is trying to get down to business.
And that includes spending issues and a controversial move to try to appoint a police chief. NBC 5's Randy Gyllenhaal with our story tonight.
Well, for the first time in many weeks, Dalton trustees and Mayor Tiffany Henyard held a public meeting together, but not at Village Hall here at the Park District due to concerns over safety and violations of the Open Meetings Act. Under the same roof, Dalton trustees gather for a board meeting, and 30 minutes late, Tiffany Henyard arrives to furious residents.
This is an embarrassment to Dalton.
For the first time in weeks, a quorum, which means the village can finally vote on crucial issues like paying bills with a nearly $3 million deficit, as residents confront the mayor who's facing an FBI investigation over spending.
You are a clown.
We will continue to speak out against wrongdoing.
Why won't you step down?
Henyard tonight moving to hire a new controversial police chief, but that is facing a legal challenge. And today, the self-proclaimed super mayor says she sent this message to President-elect Donald Trump.
Trump did win, and congratulations again. This is me saying it publicly to our new President of the United States.
Inviting Trump to meet with her, Henyard's running for reelection next year. She'll face trustee Jason House, a critic who says small businesses in Dalton suffer under her leadership.
Dalton is the only community that in order to get a business license or a liquor license, you need an attorney.
Because guess what? Just like Trump, I'mma come in on a landslide on both seats. Know that. Remember this moment when I landslide and come in for the victory like I always do.
Reporting in Dalton, Randy Gyllenhaal, NBC 5 News.
You got Michael Smith sitting up there with her. Ain't that some crazy? No, he's just getting his chair. Appointment that's not gonna get approved.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Today, I would like to call to order the regular board meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 6, 2024, and the time is? 6:57 PM. Please call in. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so hello, everyone. First, I just wanted to thank about-to-be Mayor Jason House and the trustees for allowing us to actually have a meeting somewhere where it's safe, it's disability accessible, and it's somewhere where we feel comfortable. Next, I just wanted to just look at the current administration and just ask y'all, why won't you step down? This is an embarrassment to Dalton. This is an embarrassment to Thornton Township. This is just an embarrassment to all of us residents. William Moore is here. He's not even on the payroll anymore. It's this is just like a game to a lot of them, and these are our lives that are in jeopardy. Tiffany, she's not anybody that would represent me as a black woman, as a single mother. She is a complete joke. She have put so many lives in disparity. Like, there's so many people that are hurt behind her leadership, and she have no care in the world about it. I saw her post, and now she's a Trump supporter. The other, like, the other day at the meeting at Thornton Township, you was talking about Kamala Harris, but now today you post that you team Trump, and you wanna send him a message for what? So you can get out of jail early? That makes like no sense to me on why she would want to be a Trump supporter all of a sudden. Anyway, I know that this is going to be a movie, and I just asked that Beyonce play me if she watching this because I know that a lot of people will be watching this. I am a vendor here in Dalton. I'm not a resident. I clerk, I was previously cleaning the police department. I'm here because we are owed four months of pay. Even when we weren't getting paid, we still showed up each and every day to do our job. We have shown our integrity and have, and have taken pride in what we do on a daily. We just want what is due to us.
Those of us that stand before you just want to rebuild a better community for everyone. It's not our fault that Tiffany Henyard has become the most infamous mayor in America due to her inability to listen to reason. Stan Brown, will you continue to be a rubber stamp for Tiffany? Or will you commit to serving the residents of this community the way you vowed to do when you took that seat? Andrew Holmes, why haven't you made a statement about the alleged rape of Faniel Dukes? I will never allow this question to fade away.
Mr. Moore, this, every week before our mayor came into our meetings, one time at 6:30 starting time. Disrespect to, to us, disrespect. Everybody in here has something to do, including her. Evidently though, whatever, we have to do, take second place to whatever she decides to say.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't know that that seat was reserved for you, Mr. Moore, because I don't know what qualifies you to be in that seat as reserved. So had I known that, I would've sat there politely in your place. You know, I wanna start with something, Tiffany. I hate that I'm gonna be all over the place in this comment, but it's been a while. I mean, you've done so much, and the meetings were canceled. It's just been very difficult to really address you. But the event that you had, I think it was the back to school, whatever it was with Kiki, when you were giving away free things, and you literally pointed out people that you didn't like that were in your line that you were helping, and that was disgusting.
Some of y'all in the line, let me flip the camera around so you can see them in the line. Woo, there she go, look, right there, right there. That, that part. But then I'll tell you that, didn't I get in the little hate group? But you in my line, getting food, your kids out here bouncing in the bouncy house, you on the skate rink, all that. And I'm cool with that because I love everybody.
You're a public official, and you're ridiculing and chastising people for getting the help that you always are advertising. So when they take advantage of it, that's your opportunity to chastise them, to out them, to act like, you know, you're bigger than, than everyone? That was disgusting. You're the biggest hypocrite I've ever seen in my life, just like someone said. I mean, one minute you're Team Kamala, and then the next, it's Team Trump.
I'm thankful that this meeting is here. For two years, three years, she said everything was here was illegal. Now she's forced to come here to do the right thing. The judge forced her to come here to do the right thing, and she been saying that secret squirrel meeting for how long? And people were believing it? Everything they did here was legal. So she was saying it's a secret squirrel meeting. Now she has to come to the secret squirrel meeting. Isn't that humbling? It's time to do the right thing. It's unfortunate, the attorneys who, I guess, I don't know if y'all been paying attention to what's going on, you're like the third one in. I don't know what you think's gonna be different. She's the same person. She runs through people all the time, and it's not gonna change just because you there. It's not gonna change.
Well, I had to take my shirt out of retirement so I can remind the mayor that you are going to jail and the rest of the crew. Y'all are definitely going to jail. Why are we here? Why are we at the Park District? Because you constantly violated the Open Meetings Act. And I just wanna thank the trustees for listening to the cries of the citizens, and I wanna thank residents like Dan Lee, Rosie, and it, you know, if I miss any other people that wrote letters to the AG office, I appreciate you all because you guys really put a light on this situation. All the residents have ever wanted from this mayor, we wanna know where our money is at. We tired of you hiring people that's not qualified and paying them large amounts of money. This is why these people, this man sitting right here, they so loyal because they getting paid, they, he will never find a job like this again. This man ain't never made this type of money before in his life. And the reason that she pays these people the way she pays them, to keep the loyalty. When is Andrew Holmes gonna stand up? He had a rape charge over him, and he never said, "I didn't do that." Anybody that honestly didn't do something like that, they would be saying, "Oh, no, I didn't do that." And then when finally, when Vegas came back, he still didn't say nothing. And Tiffany, you can write all you want. You can write, "I'm not going to jail." I don't know what you writing over there. But you so into that paper, and you don't even have enough sense to look at the people that put you in, some of the people, 'cause I should have didn't put you in office. I didn't vote for you. You were a bird when y'all was against each other, 'cause I knew both of y'all was garbage. So I didn't come out. Me and my husband didn't even come out, 'cause I already knew. But you don't even have a sense to even look in our face. But you rather just steal our money and do what you wanna do. It's a shame. The lawyers is looking at us, but you, you the mayor, and then you wanna come up here, "Well, I am the mayor." Yeah, we know, but you aren't, you're not conducting yourself as a mayor.
All right, you're three minutes up. Thank you.
You're not conducting yourself. And you are going to jail.
You're three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Trust me, believe, you're going to jail.
Is there anybody else? Is there anyone else?
You gonna be with us.
You're three minutes up.
That's what you gonna be going. Remember that. You going to jail. You going to jail. Ask the people to help you. You're going, they going to jail too.
All right, go ahead. You have the show.
Stay tuned like this, so I'mma ask you myself.
Hey, ma'am. All right. I'm available.
Why would you do that?
Why? Tell the why.
And if I'm lying, all these people right here, all the cameras, her, all these people, tell, tell them I'm lying then.
Okay.
Is that why you've never said anything? Is that, is that why you disappeared as soon as this came out? Is that why? I'm supposed to be scared of you? Hell, motherfucking all.
Thank you.
So tell me I'm lying, or tell them why.
That's all I can say. I'm standing with the mayor. Stand with me. Stand with you. They stand with you.
All right.
My minutes ain't over.
So.
It's a shame.
Thank you.
Leave your time, baby girl. Stand up next to victims. Then she power up. Please stand with the mayor.
I don't hear you. I think this thing I saw was to say it with all the cameras, where everybody who's missing or dead or shot or whatever, but you do something, and now I'm a victim, so stand up for me.
Yes. Yes.
Say it again.
Yes.
And you allowed me to trust you, Uncle Drew?
Yes.
Remember, I did do that, 'cause you, you ain't letting nobody mess with us. Not the two live crew.
And it's okay.
I would've never thought, ever. And I'ma hold my composure for this. I would've never thought that you would've ever. So tell him I'm.
Conscious. Yes. Justice for the mayor. Yes.
Not gonna dress her, 'cause we, we ought to see that. That's cool. I already figured that out. Me growing up under her. Me growing up under you, G.
You know what?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Trustee, 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 hold on. Let her finish, so don't go back and forth. Hold on, hold on. We at a board meeting. Trustee, you have this opportunity to speak, but this is not that. Don't go back and forth. You can say something. You got 30 more seconds. You got 30 more seconds.
Say something. If you're an advocate, advocate.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's begin, go back and forth. I'm gonna give you the floor.
Don't let her, don't let her mute you.
Let her finish.
Don't let her mute you. Say something. She deserves it. She's a victim.
Just like she didn't.
She's a victim.
And she's gone around, but she didn't care.
Just say it now. She's been waiting. She's been waiting. Say something. I beg you.
All right, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Say it, Andrew.
All right, thank you.
Speak, please. Right. 'Cause she know, she, she shut her mouth for a reason.
Thank you.
She shut her mouth for a reason. She deserves that. Speak.
All right, guys, you're not gonna get a statement if you are out of order. Simple as that. So, okay, it's over with. Y'all can have a seat. Let me finish my meeting. Drew will have the opportunity to speak, but it is not right now. So thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is?
You got no person?
I didn't know, I didn't know. I thought she was the last one. Go ahead, you have three minutes. Three minutes.
I was standing with a victim since nobody else wanted to, since you can't say nothing to her. I don't know why you let her silence you. You look stupid for letting her silence you. Say something. It's been months.
So we are continuing to work on a way that we can get our budget that will allow for back bills to be paid as well. We will honor all vendors that are paid. I have to say, it is going to be a challenging process. For those who are owed money, I am asking that you email first to the village administrator, Keith Freeman. That's K-Freeman, F-R-E-E-M-A-N, at voDalton.org, with a copy to myself, J-House@voDalton.org. And we will do, we will make sure that we continue to provide updated statuses of where the bills are to be paid, and as time allows, we will be making payments as our budget is processed and we have a better footing on where we're going.
All right, anyone else? All right, so next on the agenda, we gonna bring mayor's report up. So there's several things I wanna talk to you about this evening. One being, I know the meeting had started over, and it came here to the Park District. Unfortunately, everybody created so much confusion, so much chaos, that it was no need to move a meeting to this location. It's not even 20, 22 people in here. So I don't agree with us going to someone else's house to conduct our business. Everywhere else, they have their location, and it's in their house. So that's number one. Number two, you have to give respect in order to get it. A lot of you come to this mic talking about nothing, and when I say nothing, you're talking about Tiffany Henyard. So that means that you really are a fan of mine, and I appreciate that, because normally you will come up here and you'll talk about the business as relates to our village. But not one of you talk about any business that it relates to our village, whether it's fix your street, fix your alley, maybe your street lights out, whatever the issues are, but you don't speak to that. You speak of me, the person, Tiffany Henyard. So thank you for being a fan of mine. Third, it's a ton of things that we have going on. I have told you guys several times, we've always had resources at Thornton Township, 'cause I know I get a lot of hate because I have two big positions. Thank God, God always have favor on me, and he have blessed me with being the first female youngest supervisor of the largest township in the state of Illinois. That's why I get all the attacks, because I do have the biggest position. And also, I am the mayor of my city here, my village. So we have a surplus in our township. So if anybody need any help, 'cause y'all mixed the two up. Y'all come here, talk about township and vice versa. Next, vendors. A lot of y'all come to the podium, and y'all talk about things that you got no concrete evidence of. When you spoke about you're not getting paid and y'all addressed the mayor, the mayor's the one that's always trying to keep paying everyone. I am not the one holding up, paying you as a vendor. I'm not the one that did not put you on the warrant list slash bills list, but guess what the board of trustees have done? They put all themselves on the bills list to get paid for, back pay for conferences. They put it on there to help their friends get paid. It's all on the warrant list. But if you wanna copy of it, I keep telling you, for you, freedom of information, you will know what I know. So when I speak up here, sometimes people have to listen. All the hate blocks the listening ear. You have to listen to both sides and then understand what is being said and what is going on. When you get one side of narratives, then you go down a false narrative. Something else you residents don't know. Do you know that we are in dire restraints over at the village hall? The VA, y'all have a whole VA, village administrator, let them tell it, that it's never at work, that does not do their job? Do you not know that they did not have paper today? Clerk knows that. Clerk, he knows that. I came and asked for copies of challenges. She didn't have no ink. She didn't have a lot of stuff, but people wanna get up here and laugh, but that's cool. They keep lying to y'all. You can ask the department heads. They have a lot of things that they're missing in our village as it relates to simple things like supplies, doing day-to-day operation, invoice, papers, all kinds of stuff. But these are things that you don't hear about 'cause they don't want you to know about it. But if you ask the questions and find out the truth behind everything that's going on, it's not just, oh, they said this. That don't make it right. That don't make it true. Yes, Trump is our president. You have to accept it. You have to deal with it. You have to live with it. People can be mad, be in their feelings, but guess what you cannot do? Take away his presidency. He is the next president of the United States of America, 47th president. And our job as real leaders, that's what real leaders do, we reach across the aisle. We say, "Hey, congratulations, you won. We did." Unfortunately, Democrats didn't do their job. So yes, Trump did win, and congratulations again. This is me saying it publicly to our new President of the United States. Now, we have to work together, 'cause guess what? What color makes the, uh, blue? Red. So we have to collide with the colors and make it work out for the best of our abilities. So I wanna point that out. All the energy that you guys place into me, I wish you would pour that into yourselves. And that means your lives, the love for your family members. If you pour that same energy into yourself, you will be so much further in life. But yet, y'all come here, I don't understand. It must mean you got none of the time on your hands, and you come here and waste time to talk about negativity. I don't push that. I don't produce that. I care about people. I push love. I focus on leading with love, and you should too. It's shameful that a lot of you guys are our elders, are the people we supposed to look up to, are the people that supposed to guide us, but yet, you're not guiding us. Next, and the last thing that I have before my vetoes, is that for our giveaways, we have a turkey and ham giveaway, which we do every single year. It's off the chain. I invite the media to come out. As always, y'all come here to the mess, to the little hate meetings. I want y'all come to the real meetings to see the love that people really have for the super mayor. So please come out, come get some great footage, talk to some people that actually got a different perspective than what you see here with a handful of people, because guess what? Just like Trump, I'mma come in on a landslide on both seats. Know that. Remember this moment when I landslide and come in for the victory like I always do. Next, the toy giveaway. Look in America, stop judging people, because only God can judge. And remember, landslide, remember, victory is mindset, the Lord's. Watch what I do. I don't think you guys should be messing with bank accounts. I know nothing about that as it relates to you guys switching account over. And you guys should ask questions before you do that.
How does she lie like this? She knows all about the bank accounts.
Because I don't. And when I have the town hall meeting, all is welcome. You no press, I will call you out, and you will hear facts versus fiction as it relates to evidence that I do have to show residents, because everybody, they try to use my words, but I ain't got it, they been bamboozled, hoodwinked, and led astray. You will see the truth for what it is, because I'mma put it on paper, and I'mma show you what it is at that town hall meeting. So stay tuned for that. Someone point that out. Next on the agenda.
She accused everybody what she's doing.
Um, you gonna make sure you get her to veto, right? Okay. Next on the agenda, is there a motion for the village report? Well, you wanna, you wanna say your report? You got a report? You, you wanna say your report? You have a report now?
Have you done with yours?
Huh? That's what I'm saying. Do you have?
I just asked for the copy of the veto. You just said you done with it.
Yeah. You'll get, that's all?
You just said I'm giving the person.
No, I didn't. I said I'm gonna clerk for the record, so she can put it in the record. The attorney's gonna give the clerk my veto.
Good afternoon and evening, everyone.
So she will have that, so stay tuned.
Good evening. I'm gonna do my report right now.
Okay, clerk.
Thank you. So I am asking for approval of the minutes.
Okay, so you never can ask for a motion. That's my job. So I asked you, did you have a report? Do you have a report, something you wanna talk about?
I asked for a motion, mayor, can I finish?
You just said you asked for a motion.
I let you talk, let me have the floor.
You just said you asked for a motion.
I, I said I asked for a.
Okay, go ahead.
Which I do every month. I'm asking for approval. Can you guys hear me? From the Board of Trustees for the minutes for Monday, October the 7th, 2024. Maybe if I speak lower, people will understand me.
Our motion that we approve the meeting.
Okay, it don't work like that, guys. Y'all are so out of order. So let me bring this back, so I always say, let me educate you. I got two lawyers on my side. You cannot ask for approval, 'cause approval's like asking for a motion. And trustee, you cannot recite a motion until I call for the motion. You guys don't follow no rules in here. Does everybody do what they wanna do? Go look it up. But y'all wanna surpass me and just do what y'all wanna do. It don't work that way. Gosh.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, board. I appreciate you.
All right, next, we have village.
I'm still, I'm still on the clerk's report. Can I finish talking?
I thought you did not know.
I didn't tell you. Let me finish my part.
Okay, clerk, go ahead.
I did not interrupt you, mayor.
Clerk, I asked you, did you have a report?
Okay, guys, let me just be clear. She mentioned something about me with supplies. I just wanna correct that. Yeah, the village is low on supplies because none of our vendors wanna give us supplies without cash first. So supplies are being ordered, but it's not that someone is neglecting their job. It's just simply because we are broke. You know, and you guys all know that. And when you talk about disrespect, and they're always talking about respect, but yet, they sit here in disrespect. You have a clown sitting here who comes to work every day and don't work there. So I will apologize right now because I kinda stepped down a little bit, but if we were not broke, we would have surprise.
Okay, if we're broke, have their pay themselves. We so broke, y'all not getting paper, ink, pens. If we so broke, why are they on this list who get paid? They got several different items to pay themselves as trustees. We so broke, why you paying for conferences? We so broke, why you paying for, you out of order. You out of order. So, okay, we so broke, why you paying for this stuff? That's the problem. You out of order. Uh, village administrator report. Where the village administrator at? Where the village administrator? No village administrator here. Not here neither. Oh, he's still missing? And that's the other issue. Nobody comes to work. Nobody. It's a ghost town in our village, but go check the payroll. Check the payroll. Everybody's getting paid. Everybody's getting paid.
There, there are two items on this electronic warrant list that, it says it's from November 4th, but just even as you stated, bill, some bills are still getting paid 'cause the money
Where the village administrator? No village administrator, he not here neither. Oh, he still missing. And that's the other issue, nobody comes to work, nobody. It's a ghost town in our village, but go check the payroll, check the payroll, everybody's getting paid, everybody's getting paid.
There, there are few items on this electronic warrant list that, it says it's from November fourth, but just even as you stated, some bills are still getting paid, because the money is coming out the account. So, I'm trying to figure out, I had a concern about three C I N S that's still on here, and then I actually spoke to the vendor that came up today from TNT Cleaning, because she stated that she got paid through American Express that Chief Lacy had August fifth for fifteen fifty, but then on the AP warrant list, it has the same date with the same amount for a check to be cut. All other, all other.
She want to remove an item, like y'all always do, or you act like y'all don't know what y'all been doing? That's it, she want to remove an item, y'all entitled to remove whatever item you choose?
I want it removed, but I also want someone to answer the question about why it's on the electronic list and it's on the AP list.
And your answer is this, you guys put this together, you should have asked the people when y'all put this together, the trustees put this list together, and that's before me. So, I got this email, just like y'all got an email, you guys consult with the VA, and y'all put together this list. So stop acting like y'all did not, because that's how it got created. So tell the truth, shame the devil. But y'all study standing up here laughing about facts that I know and y'all know. So that's where we are. So there's a motion and a second, you want to remove the item, and call the roll?
Um, I have a comment on that, mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I have not signed checks in two months. I have only signed the checks that Judge Cohen has given me the authority to sign. That will conclude my comment.
And that is not true, but don't worry about it, I will prove it. Alright, moving on, call the roll. Next, the other issue on here, you got Tammy Brown, y'all say we broke. Here we go, Tammy Brown, for six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-two cents, that's for Tammy. Last one, y'all had Kiana on there, last one after that, y'all had clerk on there. Y'all put everybody on there, every single cycle, but residents y'all missing. So if they that broke, why, stop, don't pay y'all, y'all say conferences, you ain't got no money. So don't pay for that, and pay for the supplies and the things that's needed for our village to operate. So that's my statements. Do you guys want to remove Tammy Brown from this warrant list?
Excuse me, my six hundred and nineteen dollars supposed to come out of fund that is for training for the trustees, which was ten thousand dollars that we never seen. So my six nineteen compared to your hundred, two hundred thousand dollars is, 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 is nothing compared. So you want to talk about six hundred and nineteen dollars, talk about what you have spent.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
So, so, trust me, hold on. All the trips that you take, and you haven't brought back anything. Y'all don't worry about what I do, I didn't take anything from here. Nothing from here, show me.
You're not bringing back anything for it.
Show me, trustee, you said a lot of lies, please show me. You keep saying I traveled from here, y'all mix up both bodies of government.
We just don't see you there, all the other mayors are there, along with their board, we just don't see you there. So my six nineteen, I'm entitled to it.
Trustee, you shouldn't be getting six nineteen if the community is suffering. If the community is suffering, you guys shouldn't be getting anything. That's what y'all don't understand. You should not be getting six hundred of anything, because we are without concrete to fix holes, we are without clamps to do water main breaks. Trustee, trustee, are you done?
No, I'm not done yet.
Okay, I'mma let you finish, you have a second.
She gets her check just like we get our own check. Again, we're in, we are in this position now, because she screwed up the money. So now you want to point fingers at everybody else, standing up and pointing fingers at yourself. The reason why these vendors are not being paid, because she didn't pay. And then you got, uh, contracts, and who signed them? Who approved them? Again, do your job and know your job. Everything that's supposed to be with these vendors is supposed to come before the board, and they have not.
As it relates to, as it relates to them getting things for travel, it is a bill, this has nothing to do with a paycheck. So when she make in the windows about, "Did you get your check?", y'all got y'all check too, and y'all don't do nothing. So, this is a separate bill that comes off the list. So she's getting that extra six hundred and nineteen dollars. As it relates to budget, and she says a budget line item, it's a budget line item to travel for anybody. So how is it good for them, but not good for me? You cannot say tomato, tomato, you gotta sit here and basically go off of what it is. Amend this warrant list and give it back, because I'mma call you on your platform, you say you want it, you gonna give it back. So let's make a motion.
Like I said, the money is there for training, the money is there for training.
So basically, give it back, give it back, trustee. So do y'all want to amend that motion, because trustee just stated she want to give the money back? She want to give the six hundred and nineteen dollars back. Do anybody want to amend the motion?
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Do anybody want to amend the motion? Trustees? Nobody?
Can we get it moving?
Trustee, you don't run a meeting, I do, that's your problem. So you just stated you want to give the six hundred and nineteen dollars back, so please.
It is eight fourteen, can we keep it moving?
Put your money where your mouth is, please give it back.
Can we get back to business?
I don't business, it's a discussion.
Can we get back to business?
You talked all that stuff about you wanting to give the six hundred and nineteen dollars back.
Can we get back to business?
So let's give it back, trustee.
I got a motion to call the vote.
Amend it, and let's go. Second. I didn't call for the motion. You guys cannot supersede me, and that's your problem. When we in discussion, we're in discussion. At the end of the day, you made a statement, I'm calling you on your statement. Let's make amendment.
Pardon me, mayor, parliamentary procedure, you have two attorneys sitting next to you, you can ask them, they can make a motion for the, for the roll. They absolutely have that right, there's a second.
I still have to acknowledge you, sir, so until I acknowledge you, we in discussion.
I don't care if you acknowledge me or not, you, you have two attorneys here, ask them what the parliamentary procedure is.
Okay, it don't work like that. So you could be smart mouthed all you want, you should take four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars now, that's what you should do. If we that broke, why you over here taking all the money from our village? If we that broke, you should give all that money back, so.
There is a motion and a second to call the roll.
As I was stating, we're in discussion, and as it relates to discussion, I'm stating that Tammy Brown should give her six hundred and nineteen dollars back and eighty-two cents. You should make a revised motion to give everyone their money.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me clear the air, let me clear the record here.
You out of order, you out of order. You said you had nothing else to say, right? Okay, then don't say nothing. So that is my motion, those are my motions, as it relates to.
The six hundred and nineteen dollars is on the warrant list to be paid, it's not paid, it's on the warrant list to be paid.
Correct, so take it out. Take it out.
Eh, I'm done.
Thank you, I thought you was done a long time ago. Are we calling for the vote? Alright, so that's what it is. Okay, so nobody wants to do it, right? Alright, call the roll, call the roll. Thank God. So, attorney McGrath, I think you should advise your client, whoever placed this on here, that that's not legit.
With all due respect, mayor, you're completely wrong. There's been a motion and a second, it's properly on the agenda, either one of the attorneys sitting next to you can advise you.
And the attorney did just advise me, sir, and that's why I'm speaking to it.
Mayor, if you could just let me finish, either of the attorneys can advise you, if they, if they called to question anything on the agenda, there's, there's another procedure they could follow and, and take that to a different venue, and, and I welcome them to do that.
Been challenged in that process, so I'm just pointing that out, as it relates to what's going on.
So, there was a motion and a second, are we in discussion?
I understand it. So you want to let me finish? I want to talk. Alright, he said, go ahead, y'all gonna vote on it? Go ahead. Alright, call the roll.
Trustee, are we in discussion?
Y'all got something to say, go ahead.
I do.
So, to be very transparent, since he's hard quoting, I, it makes no sense to me. I think you guys should revisit this, either table it for another day, or you should re-increase the numbers, so that people are accountable for their dog that is eating up people in our village. So, that is my comments for it, I pray that the board consider them, and amend that ordinance.
That a few months ago, when I mentioned it, you said, "We do have animal control trustee Nora Wood," and that's what you stated. So, all I'm stating to the residents is, I don't, I know that she done flew from Vegas to Atlanta doing a whole media tour with the whole entourage, paying fifty thousand for travel here, fifty thousand for travel now, there. Now we are broke, and she wants to put the fines on the residents of the taxpayers, and to me, that's not fair. So, with that being said, I'm going, I vote to amend fees, so that we're not overpricing it and making it too ridiculous, where the residents can't get their loved ones back, in reference to their animal, because their animals are loved ones to some people. So, that's my stance here, thank you.
Next, is there a motion to approve appointment of special counsel? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Alright, is, is there a second? Anybody? Stand? Stand, can I get a second? Yes, no? So y'all don't want me to have a special counsel, as it relates to cases for the village of them? This the game we gonna play? Alright, thank God, I get to steal a point. Alright, it fails. Is there a motion to approve appointment of executive assistant?
So I have a question.
Is there, I'm in motion, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion and a second, now you can speak.
So, executive assistant, when did it become an appointment? And then, Jack, what is Jacqueline Richardson's position?
Trustee, you and I spoke in the lot, the parking lot, that is, and we talked about all of this, and all the people that work in our village, and what do they do. Hey, y'all out of order, stop, let us finish what we doing. So we did all of that, and you know the answer to those questions.
I don't, I'm asking.
So for you to get up here, hold on. So for you to get up here and act like you didn't talk with me, you spoke with me, you and I, and we talked about everything that was going on in the village, everything that was wrong, who did what, what wasn't approved, we talked about all of this, trustee. But yet, you come up here and have amnesia. Come on, you know what's going on, you do. So we, we here for executive assistant.
What's Jacqueline's position?
So basically, we're here for executive assistant, so I'm asking for your approval. It's what?
That's not appointed position.
Trustee, it's on the agenda. I, I either have your support or I don't. So you gonna support me, since it's not appointed position, do you support me with my hire?
It's not appointed position.
Do you, do you support me with my hire, trustee?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, that's my point, I know, you, you don't, thank you for saying that for the record, y'all don't support anything I do. So anyway, call the roll. So, couple things, I just want to reiterate what just happened. There was motions for several individuals, a motion to appoint the police chief. Guys, take it, order, order. And y'all do know the judge got a login shot heckling or doing anything, so I'mma make sure he know that tomorrow. So anyway, a motion, there has been several motions made. There's been a motion for the police chief, for Ronnie Burr Sr., and I had two votes on that, and four no's. And then there was a motion for approval of village attorney, Angela Lockey, and that was also two yays and four no's. And then I had a motion to approve appointment of special counsel, Matt Solomon. Uh, stand by, y'all want no other attorneys to eat, just y'all attorney, huh? So that motion failed, I didn't get a second, already named them, but I will rename them for record. And that is appointment of police chief, Ronnie Burr Sr., appointment of village attorney, Angela Lockey, attorney, Matt Solomon for special counsel, and also executive assistant for Michael Smith. Those are my temporary appointments, which I am entitled to by state statute. And then, of course, next board meeting, we will bring it back up again, to see if I will keep the same individual, or I will go with new people. So temporary appointment goes every thirty days, for those that don't know how it works. So I want to make sure that it's in the record, that's for the record clerk. So when I see the minutes, I want to see those statements. Put this in here, because y'all don't remember or recall, she had a payment for reimbursement for travel for trustee Belcher. They paid seventy-eight hundred dollars to Big Woods Barbecue for tea with the trustees, y'all eating barbecue at tea with the trustees? I don't think so, but it's cool. And then they had the payment to Odison, Murphy, Frazier, and McGrath. And then, they paid Nikita, I don't know where she at, twenty-five or thirty-five hundred dollars for a website, like I'm just saying. But everybody paying their friends, but y'all don't see what's really going on before you. And then also, I am also vetoing other line items. I only stated these vetoes, just so you can understand, but normally, I just say I'm vetoing, we give the vetoes to the clerk, the clerk has a copy of it, and you can get it from them. Next. Alright, next, is there a motion to adjourn? Alright, there's been motion and second.